That right after we approve the minutes and before we do the warrant, how's that sound? Okay, great. So, the minutes are in your packet for the meeting of October...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for October twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen.
I second that.
Your second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the minutes for October nineteenth?
Thank you for making the little corrections, Kirsten.
Any others? All in favor? Thank you, the minutes are approved. Rebecca, would you go right up to the microphone, please? And we'll dig into our packets here a little bit and find that information.
It's the new one he just gave us.
I am completing the information.
That's right. Get him involved.
Rebecca. Thank you, thank you for applying for this position on the Budget Committee. I know you had some various ideas of how to get involved in the town and so forth. And I really do appreciate it. Basically, the reason we do this is to just simply put a, you know, a name of the face, say hello the first time around. If you're reappointed to another committee, you don't need to do this again. Gives you an opportunity to say something to us if you wish, or ask any questions. So, with that, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, my only question was, I saw that Marty was on the board too, and is that a conflict where we both work for MMA?
I don't think so. I think actually it's probably a good thing for us in terms of having some expertise from that organization, if you will, although it's unofficial, obviously.
Right, right.
No, I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
And the person whose seat you're filling, that was actually an MMA employee as well. So, if anything, it's a precedent, so.
Well, good. That's the only question I have.
It's exciting that you're going to be getting your degree.
Yes.
In May, congratulations.
Thank you. It is exciting.
Especially with the family. And it's, we really appreciate people stepping forward, so thank you for volunteering to do this.
You're welcome.
And this is, you know, it's such a critical committee because it does review budgets in a way that's a little bit more detailed before it comes even to this board. So, I appreciate, you know, that, that look at things. And our Budget Committee and the Select Board have always worked very well together. So, I look forward to you being a part of that.
Oh, good, thank you.
I'd also just add that you, you are joining a group of very smart and very, just, just, you know, I, I just plugged in folks. The Budget Committee last year, I thought, did a very good job and took a lot of input, did a lot of just streamlining, continue to make efficiencies. So, I'm excited to see what else can happen.
Good, great.
I would make a motion to appoint Rebecca Lambert to the Budget Committee for a term beginning tonight and ending on six-thirty, twenty-twenty-one.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Rebecca Lambert to the Budget Committee for the term specified. Any discussion? I'll just give one of my little things that I'm always happy to see another person without great hair serving on the committee. Or who doesn't die there here. I get that all the time. I went off base. All in favor? You're duly appointed.
All right.
Eric will be in touch with you about the first meeting and so forth. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
This is Emmett.
Emmett?
Emmett, yeah.
Hello, Emmett.
As in Emmett from Back to the Future?
Emmett, Emmett Brown?
Even though that's one of my favorites now, it was just a thing that my husband and I both agree on.
I like that. Congratulations. Yep, all right, it worked out.
He was great.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah.
Started up there banging on the scenes of People Do That. I gotta sign it.
John cannot join us tonight. I actually did the warrants, so I will proceed to that. And this is warrants twenty and twenty-one. And the regular warrant, warrant twenty was for ninety-four thousand and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents. And then underneath that A and B for state fees were twenty-eight ninety-five and twenty-one fifty-four fifty. The payroll under twenty-one is thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents. The total of the warrants being presented tonight is one-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, eight, eight, excuse me, one-hundred-and-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents. In your package, you would have the, a copy of the register, or, or they've been handed out, I'm not sure.
They have, yeah.
The things I would note on this, just for informational purposes, is about two, four, six, seven items down, you see four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to Central Main Power, that's for streetlights. And I did read a very interesting article in the Kennebec Journal regarding...
Oh, yes.
...streetlights and what they're doing in Augusta. And there's actually probably some sort of group dynamics that's occurring. And Eric and I have had a conversation on maybe we can get in on that particular thing to use less power for our lights and convert them, convert the streetlights that we have.
That was to convert them to LED lighting.
That's correct.
So, they were purchasing the poles...
Yep.
...which have become highly reduced, highly reduced, interesting.
Yep.
Greatly reduced in, in value over time because they've depreciated. And so, it's very affordable for the city of Augusta to purchase them.
An approximate, another ten items down on the warrants, you'll notice forty-five, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and seventy cents to Houston Incorporated. That was for the wood grinding at the transportation, at the trans...
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
Bruce, the twenty-one to Callahan Construction Company?
Twenty-one to Callahan is a part of the dam.
Oh, gotcha.
Some of that expenditure that we'll now start seeing.
Yeah, those, the dams, gotcha.
Oh, the Morana Cook Dam.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
A bulk of that is for the purchase of the actual gate, so they have to preorder that. So, they ordered that, we have some mobilization costs in there, but most of it is...
Gotcha.
For that one component that they preorder.
I should have seen, I should remember that H. E. Callahan name, that was...
Right.
And Morton Salt is for winter's road salt.
Yes.
And that's Cushion's payment for the snow removal cost.
Yes, Cushion's payment as well.
Excellent.
And you will see dam items appearing here from time to time. And I just want to remind the community that when we borrowed the money for the dam, that wasn't for everything because we did a great job saving over a number of years. So, there'll be some of these things that are coming out of money that specifically has been saved for, for this purpose. So, with that, I would propose...
I'll make a motion.
Please do.
To approve warrants twenty, A and B, and twenty-one, in the total of one-hundred-and-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant at one-hundred-and-seven, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents. Is there any further discussion beyond the explanations given? All in favor? Thank you, the warrant's approved. And I'll circulate that one more. We'll move on to Select Board communication. Any members of the Select Board have anything they would like to share tonight?
I do. The trunk and tree was a huge success.
Yeah.
I ran out of candy.
Well, then it wasn't a success as far as...
We want to thank the Union Meeting House for letting us use their parking lot and all the trucks that participated and the hundreds of children and parents who came through, which was really quite exciting. And then Veterans Day. I want to thank the Third Maine, the Fire Department for Traffic Control, Dale Potter Clark for the history, and the Reedfield Methodist Church and Nancy Perkins for the lunch. And we had a special guest, Cliff West, he's a ninety-eight-year-old Marine veteran. And he was driven around by Doug Gordon in his Doofle...
Doosledorf?
Doofle. And...
No, it wasn't a Doosledorf.
No, it was a, it's a...
It's a Deuce and a half, right?
Deuce and a half?
Oh, like a Jeep?
Yeah, yeah. And had, and it took all the Third Maine back to their cars. But it was a great, that was a success also. And I want to thank everyone who participated.
Well, I want, I want to thank Chris for helping to organize that again, so it was really good.
We did put in a request for the Third Maine again, I don't know if we'll get him a third year in a row.
Thank you.
Put a request in.
Well, I was walking through part of the cemetery with a couple that came from Brunswick, who had an interesting drive in the snow that morning. And I said, "What brought you here?" And they said, "Well, our son is one of the reenactors." And I made him his coat because he said it was too cold here last year, he was going to have a coat this year.
It was cold last year because it was windy, remember?
So, it was nice that people came from afar.
And any other board members have anything else to share? Great, thank you so much. And thank you so much for all your coordination work on that. Town staff reports, Eric?
All right, I'll start by touching on the LED. I did get in touch with Pete Coughlin, who works for the Maine Local Road Center and has been very involved with getting that started. So, I have an email from him, I'll forward along to you. And also, I wanted to give an update that...
Want you to forward it to all board members?
Forward it to all board members.
Yeah.
That I have been in contact with Sun Dog Solar, and they are preparing a second proposal for us for solar...
Solar array.
Installation and financing and all that in, in, in very much the same way as Revision Energy is. So, that's been moving along well, they have all the information they need, and so I'm excited that that's...
Is Revision doing an update?
They are as well, yes, they are doing an update. Yep, because the financing has changed with the regulations changing at the state level, so.
And along with the LED information that you're getting, might we be able to find LED fixtures for the parking lot lights?
Yes.
I think we're down to two now when we go to leave in the dark. I feel strongly that we need to have those working.
It might not be a bad idea to change out the packs on the building that are those kind of yellow halogen...
They're very expensive compared to new lights. And we do want to keep them down-facing so that we are as compliant as we can be with the Dark Skies group.
Yes, that's important too, because they weren't designed that way when they were put in in the eighties, so we will look at those as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I've got a long report, but I'll try to breeze through it pretty quickly and just summarize that roadwork, including crack sealing, brush, culvert cleaning, all that is more or less done for the season. We had some, some trouble getting the brush piles picked up, but now those are all cleaned up. So, that last bit of work is done. And if weather permits this winter, we will do some more brush work. But that's, that's only if, if weather permits. Leaf cleanup in the cemeteries has been more or less completed. We have, if it's not done now, it's not going to get done, but most everything was done prior to Veterans Day. We had, finally had two folks on staff that week before Veterans Day, so we pushed very hard to get the, that work done as a priority. So, those should be all set. The gates have been closed, those that have chains are locked. Again, this early snow moved that up ahead of where it usually would be. Let's see, I'm going to talk about the library a lot later on, so I'll just skip that for now. And talk about that early snow, that we did have pretty good success this first time around with our contractor and our equipment as far as meeting that, that initial and early storm. Cushion did a great job getting the roads clear, temperatures helped out the following day. And we tried out the, the new bobcat on the sidewalk, got, got that lined up, and it works excellent. The one piece that we will be adding is a sander. And so, we have the option of a, of a front mount sander that, once we go through and do the, the snow removal, we can then go through and do a pass with this sander. And it's nice because it's, it tilts forward and you can use it to actually scoop the sand up, so no more hand shoveling, no more trying to use the backhoe to dump sand all over the equipment. It's, it's fairly well-clean and self-contained, so really happy to have that coming in the next couple of weeks. Let's see, drainage problems at the fire station, we identified some, they've had clogged drains for quite a while there. We now know where the problem is, we thought we had fixed it, but we had heavy rains and the hole filled in. Trouble is that these holes are five feet deep, and we really have a much bigger project. We had an area that was failing up from where we had dug in. So, we have a sizable project, we'll probably need somebody that has a trench box to go through and replace a couple hundred feet of line anyway from the back of the building. But very important for draining out, draining out the building.
What type of drainage, not sewage?
This is just in the, well, they connect, but the, any kind of gray water, sump water, water from the sump pump, I guess, not gray water, that's not the right word. It would be sump water and then water from the pit that is underneath the bay. So, when they empty their trucks, when they clean the trucks and it goes into the bin, into the pit, it flows out of that. And that's what was clogged primarily.
Okay.
So. Let's see, administration and personnel, I want to thank all the applicants for the general services position. We had three or four folks express interest and, and we met with a few of them. And I want to welcome Ben Rodriguez as the new general services member of the Maintenance Department. And he has a lot of experience with mowing and grounds maintenance, so a very good fit. He also has a very good disposition for the, for the, for the work that's being done, the interaction with the public. So, I'm quite pleased to be able to bring him on. And we will have an employee meeting in December, the date is to be determined. The meeting will cover annual training topics as well as regular, regular, regular meeting items. With respect to the transfer station, we've had a lot of activity there. The access road was paved, we have two-and-a-half inch base. The one-and-a-half inch surface will be going on in the, in the spring. In order to maintain the integrity of that roadway, we are not allowing the heavy trucks on it through the fall and spring and probably the winter, it's just simpler to just close it off and say, "Use the other entrance." So, they will be coming in that side entrance until that second lift, making the total four inches, is in place. The apparel impact clothing bin will be installed at the transfer station by the end of November. All clothing and shoes are accepted. And so, this is something that is an alternative to going in town to Goodwill or bringing appropriate, you know, clean items to the Black Bear Boutique, which does have a focus on, on youth. So, they are looking primarily for those types of items. And again, all shoes and clothing are accepted, so they'll take anything. The...
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Bill, do you need us to shut the fan off? Right under the coat. Sorry, I just had a feeling.
All right.
And we're back.
Rather than talking loudly. And...
So, this is going to be given to people who need clothing, or...
Yes, and some of it that's not suitable for donation will be recycled.
Okay.
So, it's a clothing recycling and donation program. It's like the old Planet Aid bin or what you see for Goodwill, it's that type of program.
Okay.
So, it's a way to, to offset some of the impact from not having soft items at the swap shop.
Okay.
The, the new sand shed is nearly complete and will be installed prior to Thanksgiving. I spent a good part of this morning working with the maintenance staff to, to get that framed up. And we have the interior sheathing on, so we just need to wrap that up tomorrow. And it should be ready to go, and we'll definitely have it up, like I said, prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. And I do apologize for any inconvenience that that transition may have caused. You know, we were short-staffed, the, the winter came early, so we just weren't ready. But the old building needed to be removed, it was in bad disrepair, it was leaking, falling apart, dangerous, all of those things. So, it's a necessary transition, and I'm very excited about the new structure, which will be very accessible and meet the needs of providing sand for public. It should be able to hold sixty to eighty five-gallon buckets worth of material, so definitely a good supply there once that's completed. And brush and demolition, as Bruce noted, have been ground at the transfer station. So, the only thing we have left now prior to winter is taking out the, the white goods, and then we'll have a more or less clean slate, which is how we always like to start the winter season at the transfer station. Announcements, Thanksgiving hours, it's important to note these. The town office and transfer station will be open Wednesday from eight to noon. So, normally the transfer station opens at eleven and goes until six. On Wednesday, because of the half-day for the holiday, they'll be open eight to noon. Town office normally open twelve to six also, we will be open eight to noon. So, we're just moving everybody ahead for that time. And then, another nuance is that the transfer station, normally open on Saturdays, will not be open the Saturday after Thanksgiving. However, it will be open on Black Friday, so you can dump your turkey carcass and not have it sit all weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's the rationale, I think, for that.
It's the turkey carcass part of the contract.
The turkey carcass, I mean, that's really, let's be honest, you know, that's what it is. So, so, yeah, that'll, that'll be the, the holiday hours. Any questions?
I have just one, which, don't try to solve it now, but I was at the transfer station dropping off brush and shingles and compost in the dark. And I think we either ought to shut those areas down in the dark or put lights up.
Oh, in the perimeter areas?
Yes.
Yep.
It was really tricky walking through there, and it was muddy and ruddy and...
Maybe we could put some LEDs in.
There you go.
Well, I also think it'd be a good idea...
Just a suggestion to think about.
It'd be a good idea, and I think about the way that the trail, the new trail that's out there also works in, you know, just in case it's lit, you know what I mean, and just to have it in case you get caught.
I just don't want to see somebody get hurt and have a liability issue on our hands, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
LEDs.
You have a couple more reports, Rob and staff?
Yes, I have a treasures report, which I'll, I'll move through as quickly as I can.
Are you going to mention the beach report?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Check reconciliation was completed through October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Our accounts are in balance and no unusual activity was observed. That would be things like bounce checks or balance issues.
Was in the packet?
Yes, it was in the packet, yep.
Okay, it's major.
Our auditors conducted their field visit, they may, they may come back, but they seem to be pretty, pretty well busy while they were here and pretty well satisfied with what they were getting their hands on. So, that has started. And we did have one issue that we identified, which was FDIC limits for deposits are two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, anything over that is not insured. We had been carrying a balance of around three-hundred thousand, more or less, at, let's see, it was at Camden National, and then that was moved into our sweep account with Andrew Scoggan. And so, by doing so, our deposits are protected. So, that was a, a very good observation on the part of our auditors, and I'm happy to have that taken care of. Basically, we should be at about one-third expanded for the year, being in, just wrapping up our fourth month. Expenses and revenues are very much on target, there are a few anomalies that I wanted to point out. We have been spending more on roads and drainage and also on capital improvements, so those two departments look significantly more than they have been in the past, more than last year, year-to-date or month compared to month. And that's the reason we've just been spending more in those areas. And it's a good thing, right?
Yeah.
And then the other thing is the expenditures for regional organizations appear to be down by an order of like, you know, sixteen-hundred percent. But it's not really that good of a story. What happened was we had split out county tax out of regional organizations. So, for the year and for the month, that payment came out of a different department, and so it, it looks better than it is. And that's my treasures report, any questions on the month of October?
Sweet done once again.
Thank you. So, Bruce mentioned our beach report, and I want to thank Rob Cannon again for his work this summer and the rec board for their work in collaborating on, you know, operational development, putting some new programs in place. And, you know, things like the Storytime at the Beach, the movies at the Beach, working with a new program where we have staff support from, from the state to Maine, which helps our budget and helps overall balance there. So, some really different and creative things, a result of, you know, kind of having to jump in and get things going. And it was a, it was a little bit testing at times, but everybody came together and it worked out very well. And this report from Rob Cannon is just a summary of what happened. It was a hot summer, and we also had a lot more activity at the beach, so we were up as far as our sales of permits at the beach. And he has some recommendations for programming in the future included in this report as well. So, and programming is something we're going to be focusing on, obviously.
Yeah, I want to thank him for a very thoughtful report.
Yeah, working with Rob during the festival was, was very easy, and, and the, the beach and the rec department were great doing that, so.
And so, I mean, the actual numbers, just in case public... is that the membership or the pass, the annual passes increased from one-twenty-eight the previous year to a hundred-and-eighty. That's a very substantial increase.
Let's say sold a hundred-and-fifty-what daily passes.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of daily...
It was a busy summer, and they did a good job handling it, so.
Yeah, very good.
I hope that some of these items will be considered when the budget is put in by Rob.
Absolutely, and...
Or the, I don't know if he's putting it in or the, the rec board, beach board, so...
It'll likely be the rec board in consideration of some of his requests, yep.
We all set with the town staff reports?
That wraps it up.
Okay, great. We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. In, in the packet, I would like to thank for the, the following for their, their minutes and meeting highlights. The assessors' minutes of October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the conservation commission minutes of September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, the library board minutes of October third, the cemetery committee minutes of October eighteenth, the trail committee minutes of September twenty-fifth. Just going to make a quick remark on this, because I never do, and that is that I actually read all of these minutes, and I know the other board members of the board do as well. They are in the packet, and part of the reading them into the record is so that the public knows that these committees have met or boards have met. And, and you can always go into the packet on the website and, and read them yourself. So, we're reading them into the records so that it's noted that they've been submitted, but the, if you want to read the detail, please do. And so, thank you to those committees for that information. Public communication, any members of the public that would like to address the Select Board tonight? Okay, thank you. We've already considered the appointment of Rebecca Lambert, and so we're down to new business already. We're going to hear an update from the library board of trustees and the town manager on library activities and building maintenance issues, and in your packet, there's a fair amount of supporting information. So, I'll turn it over to Eric and Deb.
Yep.
And go, go right ahead. Deb, if you want to, are we starting with Deb or...
Well, I'll start with a basic summary of the, the physical issues.
It's your show, go ahead.
And then Deb will add a lot, because she has done a lot, so.
Yep, and I would just ask Deb if you step up to the mic when it's time to add anything. Yep, thanks.
So, one of the Select Board goals was to work on our buildings and understanding them better. And we had an opportunity to move forward in conjunction with a grant application on a professionally done building inventory and study. Basically, we contacted the same person that we had used when we were working on the sale of our eleven-eleven Main Street property. He does hundreds of inspections on houses... Main Street property. He does hundreds of inspections on houses in, in the real estate market. So very well able to assess the situation, look at the things that are going on in the building and make recommendations on what we could or should do to, to move forward with, with repairs and maintenance. So we did that and we had some, some, some mixed reviews, to say the least. The primary issues that we observed were a leak in the roof and a timber in the roof that was in very poor condition and sagging. That was the kind of the sirens going off on that one. We had a number of other issues that need to be looked at as far as safety, electrical, things that can be, I think, fairly readily handled, with the exception of a few, that are more long-term and significant investments. But back to the roof, that was a pressing enough issue that I wanted to get more information. And so we contacted CES, who has done a lot of engineering work for us in the past, and they sent someone up to perform a, a study of that beam and the whole roof structure. And we are waiting the response from them. But their report was, or their initial assessment, I should say, was pretty clear that the roof really has no support other than the sides of the building. There are no stringers in the attic. There are no trusses. There are no real sizable rafters. It's basically a, a six-by-six beam and then small stringers connected to it. It's basically a shell. So that puts a lot of weight out on the edge of the building. And so in the long term, we're going to have to find a way to relieve that weight beyond just fixing that one beam that, that has a structural issue. So they're going to give us a report and recommendations on what to do. It could mean dropping something down through to the first floor or to the basement to connect that structure up top with the ground, or building, putting in trusses and spreading that load so that instead of being an outward force on the walls, it's a downward force on the walls. Two very important considerations. The, the roof itself, the sheathing on it and the shingles are in quite poor shape. The shingles, twelve years old and they're at the end of life. They're failing horribly. So I'm looking into if we can get any money back from the manufacturer on that. But something went wrong. We got a bad batch of shingles. I don't know exactly what, but far too soon for those to be failing. When we do replace those, I'm going to recommend that we go with a metal. But at this point, one option may be a replacement of the entire roof, sheathing, shingles, and substructure and all of that. So we're looking at a major project. We might be able to get by with just, you know, stiffening up what's there, but we have to wait for the engineer's report to make a, a final assessment. And then we have to start talking about, in consideration of some of the other issues, you know, how and when we're going to be investing in that building. So that's my summary about what's been done. We did take care of one issue immediately, which was trees touching the building, shading the building. We've cut down two trees. It's made a huge difference already. And that will help with ventilation and airflow around the building. Also, you know, not mildew, but moss going on the roof and deteriorating the shingles. So that was done quickly and it will help providing access to get to the roof in the event that we need to do something from the outside. So I want to say that I've had help from the maintenance crew and it was, was great working on this. And from some members of the library, board of trustees, they're both here today. So I want to thank Sonya and Deb for their work in understanding and moving all this stuff forward. And beyond that, for the physical work to the building that Deb has done, she's been up doing some, some remodeling. And it gives me hope that we can do work to that building and keep it, you know, keep, keep it going. So I'll turn it over to Deb to talk about some of her thoughts and then I'll probably ask Sonya for an update on grants.
Have you, have you read what I sent to you?
I've just briefly read this one.
Okay, so that sort of says, and Bruce, you can help me?
Sure.
With any of the details about the building committee? I, I tried to remember best I could. You may have better recollection than I do, but that was kind of how I summed it up.
No, I think it's, it's a good summary.
Okay. So given that we, as you see, that we did at one time try to focus on a different building, a different structure, and it hadn't happened. As a board member for the last ten years, we've been talking about, what are we going to do with the library? So I've gotten to the point where I think we're going to be where we are. And I wanted, I started focusing more about how we can make what we have more functional. And, and that's where our focus is right now. And I think I've pretty much outlined what we've done and what we're doing and what we like to do. And I would recommend that you all come over to the library and I can walk you through it and give you sort of a, an overview of what, how we'd like to see it change.
I think that's a really good idea, Deb. We had a tour of the transfer station recently. And so we've done some of these walking tours or whatever as a board. The cemeteries is what we did this last year. So I, I think that would make sense. So we'll see if we can schedule that for early this coming year.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll invite the budget committee too, because they're going to have to talk about this a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, they ought to see it.
Yeah.
I, is it okay to chime in, Deb?
Yeah, are you finished?
Sure.
Are you finished?
Yep, if you have any questions.
I do have some questions, but go ahead.
Unfortunately, this has been around a really long time. And I've been around a lot of those times. And I'm dismayed that we're at this point where we're having to push it. But maybe that's what we needed, because I think we were all just going to drag our feet. It came to light in the last year and a half or so, what the historical value maybe of this building is to the town, being the Courier family home. And it's been mentioned in multiple talks given by Dale Potter Clark. And where there's no other suitable building in the center of town, which is really what people had expressed is their desire to keep it there, we probably will have to end up keeping the building. And I think, my opinion is, I don't want to do this halfway. And if we're going to talk about essentially taking the roof off and putting it back on, I want to make sure the foundation is able to handle that. And if we're going to do this, let's just do it and do it right and do it all at once. And let's, if we have to bond it or borrow for it, I think we need to just make that decision. So I, I would really like to see the budget committee put this into our CIP and have it happen now, because you have to have a roof. If you don't have a roof, we're going to close the library and we're not going to have any building. I think that's what you essentially said, right, Eric?
We could probably patch it up for a little bit, but yeah.
Patching it up is what we've been doing for a couple decades. Five thousand here, fifteen thousand there, seven thousand, twenty thousand. I think if we've got a dedicated library board, they're working hard. We've got a great librarian, a great program. We need to support it now. If the roof is falling off, we need to fix it and do it right. That's my opinion, so...
I will say the foundation, even though it's old, had been worked on a number of years ago, maybe within the last ten, since I've been on the board. And they did quite a bit of work and they put a plastic down on the floor and, and some dehumidification in there. It's much improved. They cleaned it out.
Yeah, I, I want to also agree with Catherine that if we approach this, that we approach it holistically as a master solution to whatever degree we can. And that also means, I think, this report is very good in terms of telling us what's wrong, what needs to be fixed and so on and so forth. But I think we want to make sure we marry that with where are we going and what is the vision. And one of the things I discussed, I was on the library building committee. Actually, I think I was the chair for a year or two. But the, we want to, I think we want to talk about space utilization. And so if that means that as a part of the overall taking a look at the roof and so on and so forth, it means that we look at that addition that we have in a different way. Or if we think we need to build out in five years, we plan for that and so on and so forth. So I just want to make sure that those things are on the table as we look at things, that we don't, we don't find ourselves constricted again in the future because we did a repair that didn't allow us to grow as we might need to grow.
It would be worth having the discussion again.
I think it would, it would.
As long as it happens in time to fix the roof correctly.
So, yeah.
I don't, I see that as separate.
I mean, I think, I think emergency repairs are emergency repairs and they should be done. But I think, you know, overall, particularly if we're going to get into the structure of the roof, we ought to say, where is this going down the road? You know, I've joked around several times about like, I'd like to see a giant sun space come off the back of that building and be a reading room and so on and so forth. But I'm not actually joking when I say that. I mean, maybe we do need that kind of space. And I know we, we talked about our space concerns when we had the building committee. So I just want to make sure we incorporate where we're going down the road.
I just want to add to what was, has there been like a study or, or any type of sort of imagining of, you know, of what, okay. Because I'm, listen, I'm, you know, I, I'm not going to say the phrase. I'm just going to say I'm unfamiliar with this saga. So I need to acquaint myself with it. So that's why I asked that.
Yeah, I'll cut to the chase. I mean, on that, the library building committee had a, a vision of moving forward with it, with a new building. And that's kind of the process they went through. They went through a different, some steps of analyses and so on and so forth. And then we came to a point where the select board at the time was not willing to deal with that. And that's all fine and well. That was, that was that time. So we didn't deal with it. And so I think with this board, we take a look and we try to plan appropriately for the long term.
Another piece of the history is that it's gone back and forth for years. Is it the library board that needs to say what they need? Or is it the town because it's a town building? And so who's going to sort of guide the process, dictate the use, et cetera? And I mean, obviously, it has to be both.
Exactly.
The library board needs to say what their needs are and be receptive to what the town can afford to give them.
Which is what we did with the building committee, but as Bruce said, it really didn't take off. And after, you know, there was just so much time that I'm willing to wait. So I've got to the point where, okay, if this is what we're going to live with, we're going to live with this and we'll make it as good as we can. And that's where I am right now. And I'm happy to take that and make it even better. But I think what we have can be made to function quite well.
These photos are great.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, Deb has some really good ideas in the library. I mean, she's been busy. She has...
Yep.
Here, here.
So I, with, with all of that in mind, let's just make sure we keep a very forward posture on that. I will say that, you know, and I, every single board that's doing volunteer work and maintains whatever they happen to have in the town is doing a great job. But I will say that this place, having a building and the focus of programs and the amount of use that I see and its growing use as far as I can determine, is really important. So this has become a very key service to the community. So I want to make sure we, we entrust ourselves to do a really good job with it.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. The trees that were removed, were those originally in anybody's memory or something like that?
Yes.
Because somebody said that.
The one tree that was, is near the ramp, that was a memorial tree. But we did talk with the people that originally had planted it there. And they knew that there might come a time when that tree was going to be in the way. And I was told today there might possibly have been a second tree planted, but I've got to check that out as a backup tree, so to speak. But I, I don't know if, I haven't verified that story. So I intend to look into that. Otherwise, we are going to plan on planting another tree away from the building?
Yep.
To replace the memorial tree.
Great, that's great.
We, we did save as well a piece of the trunk for use by somebody.
To me, the roof is, is an overriding concern, okay?
Yes.
However, I see another deadly thing occurring and that is, I'm really concerned about mold. And the reason I would be concerned about mold and ask everybody else to be concerned about it, if, if it is indeed occurring, is it's probably occurring because of dampness and so on and so forth. And I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we protect the collection. Because I'm assuming that would be...
The place over there, the potential for mold is in that one picture of the back room upstairs, that he suggested that some of the black on the old wallpaper might be mold. He didn't say it was, but it could be. I don't see any evidence of that anywhere else in the library, although we do have, some of the books are on the edges. They call it foxing, I think.
Yeah.
And they're not, that's...
I think foxing's an aging thing.
It is an aging thing. It may sometimes can be associated with mildew, but then it's not definite. One of the things we wanted to address, and I'm going to get Sonya up here in a minute, because we have tried, we have put in a, a grant to the Stephen King Foundation to help us address some of the issues.
Yep.
That, some of the changes that we've been envisioning for the interior of the library, along with heat pumps to go in that vision, so that we can better climate control the library upstairs and down.
Great.
So yeah, we're on top of that stuff in, in a way that, but we definitely need the help of the, of the town. There is no doubt. Although we're doing what we can.
Great. That hole under the building on the rear wall, is that from when we put equipment in the basement?
I don't know.
Remember we excavated?
Yes, and it's in that area. And I don't know how, a big chunk of the, it's the big chunk of the foundation that was moved.
Maybe just slumped or something.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it was like in a completely different area. It was so weird.
Somebody moved it.
Get it out of the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, but apparently it's been dealt with now.
We did fix that.
Okay, well, that, those are my questions. And thank you so much.
Yeah.
I mean, there are, there's a whole list here of immediate concerns and secondary concerns. And I would just like to see a, I don't want to call it a rush, but yes, a rush proposal put forth for, okay, we have a recommendation here that these things are critical. Things like fire extinguishers, some outlets, there's an extension cord somewhere. To me, those things need to be, have, need to occur right away. And you may have already done some of those, because they're just maintenance things. But other things really have to happen. They can't wait until we decide are we building a building or not. And, and other thing, I'd, I'd just like to see the whole thing have a proposal that we can take forward this year.
Yeah, I think it's going to have to be, you know, part of the budget process, getting proposals for, you know, installing a sprinkler system, for adding the, one of the things that the grant asked for was a, a fire escape on the second floor, so we can have that be more of a public space. So there are some things like that, that, including, and of course, the roof repairs, that need to be bunched together. And then we need to have probably some miscellaneous items in there as well. But yeah, the idea would be that we carry it forward in that way with the standard process of getting RFPs and then putting it together into a budget. And I think that there, there is a chance that we might very likely need to bond this. And this is one of those situations where I would recommend a, a fairly hefty contingency. But we'll, we'll see what happens when we get there.
I will say that one of the things that we really want to do is to, in our circulation area, it is not very efficient right now. And one of the problems we've always had and we've never dealt with is there is actually no librarian's desk. There's a circulation desk where people can come and check out, but our librarian has no place to work. And we want to deal with that. And it's part of our bigger plan. But it will be different than it exists right now, in our, in our imagination, anyway.
Notice nothing was in this report about ADA. If we're going to start using the second floor, do we need to make it accessible?
We're not required. As long as we can have meetings on the first floor, we're okay. So if, if there is somebody that needs to have access, we would have to just move down to the first floor. Fortunately, the available room upstairs isn't that large, so we could handle that. So we are okay.
Good.
We are okay with that. But if we are going to be using the second floor on occasion, we do need to have that ex, secondary exit.
Right. Perfect, okay.
Yes, lots to work on.
So we need to hear from Sonya still, yes?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
But we don't want her to come and not hear from her.
No, absolutely not.
I'm willing to listen.
I came on board in July and heard of the issues that we've been having. Took it upon my... myself to file a, for a grant with the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. We applied for the maximum, which I think was eighty-five thousand? Seventy, seventy-five thousand. Was seventy-five thousand, and gave a list of the things that we've been talking about, such as heat pumps, an excess upstairs, shades for the windows so that we could try to keep the, you know, the cool in and the heat out, chairs, a librarian's desk. And when it took place that we had the building inspection, I made a phone call to them and just said, for the record, when you do come to our application, bear in mind that we may need to replace our roof, and we are in dire need and help. And not much I could do other than leave a message. You can't reapply, you can't send anything else in once it's done. So, haven't heard from them. They said it would be a six to eight week wait, and we're looking at, I think this is our fifth week, when in the seventeenth or fifteenth, something like that. So I think we're right at our, our fifth week. So now I've been looking at other grants. The Onion Foundation does provide a grant for us to do programs with children, which we've started to do, like the Rock Talk is we're advertising for. They will pay for some of these things. But be, when you do apply for something like that, you have to be a 501(c)(3). We don't have that with our library, but the Friends of the Library have a 501(c)(3), and I've been talking to Christine to see if we can do something as a joint effort, so that we can apply for some of these other grants. I've looked at the Department of Agriculture. They have grant money out there to help with libraries. So I've been doing some research, have found a couple of others that I want to look into further, and just going forward, trying to find some grant money to help us out.
And Deb Doten has written grants in the past. She would help you. She's on the Friends.
So that's awesome.
What is timeline on the Stephen King, I mean, when do you hear from them?
Six to eight weeks.
Okay. So it's a rolling, it's not like a drop, a drop date?
No.
Yeah, okay.
So before Christmas, you'll hear?
We should hear something before Christmas.
You're going to hear it either way, or it's just?
I think we would hear either way. I can't imagine they would just kind of leave us.
Yeah.
I would think so.
We've had a lot of good, I don't want to say luck, but we've had a lot of good response to grants that have come from the Trails in Conservation. So I think the town is poised to do well with writing grants. We, you know, so I think this is wonderful, and thank you so much for taking that on and doing it, because we're going to need help from the greater community, as well as the Reedfield community.
And didn't you say that Tabitha and Stephen King grant was easier to apply for than some of the others?
Yeah, it was just, um, simply, what are your wishes in ten thousand words or less?
Yeah.
I mean, it was pretty basic. I didn't go into any spiel. I didn't elaborate on anything. It was just the clear, bare bones, simple, because I didn't want to make it more complicated than what it.
Yeah.
I figured the simpler the better.
That just gives them a good idea of what we need.
Yes. What we need, what we serve, the number of people, town, you know, all of those things that Eric gave me some information and.
Great. Well, make sure to let us know when you hear.
I will. You'll hear me hollering when I open the mail.
Jerry White has sent us emails saying, woo-hoo, or darn. Yeah.
Well, I hope it's a whole.
So feel free.
Yeah.
Are we all set with the library?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all the hard work that's being done, and, and probably will be done. We'll move on to a discussion of a local food ordinance and related issues. As you know, in, one of our goals was to investigate the needs and benefits, as well as a best fit approach for a local food and farms ordinance with public and farmer input. And in your packet is the City of Augusta's Food Sovereignty Ordinance, which I believe they passed.
They did.
They did. Just very recently, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you both.
And Deb Doten is interested in being involved in this. She's out of town today, but she's talked to some farmers in Reedfield, and she says they're for this, the one she's talked to. And she said it would be local growth and economy. And the person who wrote this for Augusta will come out and do a presentation for the public.
So, my thought on this would be to think about proceeding with maybe a workshop for the select board. And that would be to take a look at, to invite actually, specifically, people who might be affected, farmers and so forth, and to hear their concerns, and to do that in workshop mode with the select board. It probably would be a one-topic evening, I think.
Yeah.
Probably for a workshop. The other thought that occurs to me is that there was a bill that would have addressed this matter on a statewide basis, that the, that Governor Lapage almost signed, but did not. I'm not sure why. There's some back and forth going on there. But it's very possible that with the new governor and legislature, that this might be an item dealt with in the first session very quickly. And so it might actually make a local ordinance almost moot, if you will, or not perhaps need, unless we wanted to do something more specific. So with that in mind, what I could do is, before we schedule a workshop, I would contact Craig Hickman, who is our representative and also a farmer, and have a discussion with him and see if something, if he has an inside, he might even be a sponsor of something.
Yeah.
So, I think those would be the couple of steps to, to consider in terms of dealing with this, so we could get it, if we were to do ordinance, we could get it in shape and time to put into the June packet for approval. Does that make sense?
I would agree with that, and there are a growing number of communities around us that have been doing this. So, it's timely.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll contact Craig, and I will tentatively work with Chris on scheduling a workshop for a forthcoming meeting. Any other thoughts, or thoughts from just looking at this?
Yeah, I just want to say that the Augusta ordinance really is about as clean as you can get, right to that core issue of being able to sell food that you create that's not meat. But there are a lot of other issues around this, including open space preservation, you know, farmland credits, things like that. So I think that having that meeting, regardless, you know, of whether or not this particular issue needs to be addressed, I think hearing from those folks is really important, because there may be other things that we could do to support agriculture and the local food economy. And I think that, that's, that's valuable to consider as well, so.
I think that's a good point. So, with that said, what I'll do is kind of abbreviate my note to myself to go ahead and actually schedule a workshop. But we'll also get the information from Craig as well. So, moving on, anything else on that particular item? Okay. Moving on, consider facilitation process with Cove Road subdivision. Can you give me some background on this, please? Eric?
Yeah, we have a fairly complicated issue involving the Cove Road subdivision. The subdivision was initially formed, I believe, in nineteen eighty-eight, and then revised in two thousand eight. And during that time, there were some deed transfers that should have happened but didn't. And also during that time, up to the present, there has been a lot of, I guess, confusion around who has rights and what those, who has standing and what, you know, what, what, what right of way actually and does and should exist. So, in summary, it's very complicated, and I, I have a hard time explaining it. But basically, I summarize it by saying that we have real estate issues, we have right-of-way issues, we have permitting issues as far as the town's involvement, and we have neighbor issues, where there's just conflict between neighbors, in, in large part as a result of some of these issues, but also, I think, precipitating some of these challenges. So, it's a very complicated situation, and the town has made some mistakes along the way. We issued permits for construction on sites that probably should not have had permits issued because subdivision regulations were not being followed. So, that then puts us in a position of having to accept essentially those changes, and look at how we treat other parcels similarly situated, as well as other parcels in the subdivision. Unfortunately, we have a, a major role here, in part because of our past mistakes, but also because we're called out by deed in a number of, of the individual lots deeds as being involved, having a stake. So, beyond the deeds, we have our general role of enforcing and helping to create subdivision regulation. We were part of the process. The planning board approved the subdivision rules as they, as they were developed. So, we have a seat at the table, we have some responsibility here, I believe, and we have a situation that's very tough to sort out. I was saying earlier to, to Mr. Bulleye that I don't know if it's a Rubik's Cube or a ball of twine, but it's awfully complicated, and it needs some, needs some sorting out. My belief, and my belief from talking with a few of the folks down there, including some of, some outside experts who have been keeping an eye on this, I guess I'll say, one of the best first options would be to try to facilitate a discussion. Having a professional facilitator meet with each of the ten lot owners in person or on the phone, however, and try to get as much information as possible about their concerns, their understanding of the legal situation, any information they have that might not have been shared with, with others, and, you know, what, what they're looking for, what their, what their ideal solution is. Bringing all that together and trying to find a way to, to make it all work, perhaps through a couple of group meetings, maybe one, maybe two. If, if appropriate, if we get through this, we find that everybody's at odds, and there's no way there's going to be a solution, then we might have to try something else. But we've had some, enough discussions, I believe, to, for me to feel that, that this is probably better than the alternative, which is somebody taking somebody else to court. It, it might not be somebody taking the town to court, it might be one neighbor taking another neighbor to court. But the, the challenges with that are time and money, frustration, and there's been a lot of frustration in this, in this neighborhood, and that's one of the things I really want to see worked on. But we have a role too. Again, not just because we want to see people be happy and have good neighborhoods, but because these lots, one of which has a right of way through it, it's going to be challenging for us to issue a permit, if we can at all. That means that that'll never have a, a house on it, or could never. If there's a house on it, we get four, five thousand dollars more in taxes every year than what we're getting now. The two lots beside it that have had houses built, they have a right of way as well that should have been transferred. When those go up for resale, it's going to be a hard sell, and it's going to affect the value. Nobody wants a right-of-way going through their backyard or their front yard. So, beyond having an interest in deeds, in subdivision, in, in a role, we also have an interest financially. And if somebody sues the town, we're out a couple thousand dollars for that anyway. So, I believe that a facilitated solution, again, first best option, and I'm requesting a maximum of three thousand dollars to be expanded from our contingency for that purpose. And with the intent of trying to move forward in a quick manner, two to three months, getting those individual meetings taken care of, working with appropriate individuals. I have a list of facilitators here from the main association of facilitators, or main association of mediation, sorry, and some, some excellent names, some excellent skill sets here. I was able to search for people that have experience with real estate, land use, government, excuse me, and general group facilitation, and we had, I think, eight people we could choose from and two or three in the area. So, I'll just wrap up there and say, it's a big issue, it's one that we've struggled with, and we haven't always handled appropriately. I think that this is a way to try to get back on track. And if we fail, then we've tried. But if we, if we don't try, it's not going to end well. Someone's going to be in court.
Yeah, I want to make sure that before board members weigh in, did you want to say anything, sir?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, if you would like to go to the microphone, introduce yourself, please do. That's okay. Yeah, please use the microphone if you will. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know us, I'm Dennis Bulleye, Warwick and Cowan.
Thank you.
And my concern, like we discussed earlier, Eric, whether we're saying, I just want to say, in addition, in addition to what he has said, my concern is that whatever process hardest materializes, is if we find a way of measuring progress. If this process is deemed, had to be said, three months, I don't want to see it become four, five, six months. I'm not saying, I don't want to say resolve it to somewhere like within a month, but let's be reasonable. Let's keep, let's keep this guy on the radar and keep watching it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And so, that would be one of the parameters we would give to a mediator, that we somehow have a measuring stick, or time expectation discussion as sort of one of the first things. I mean, you know, maybe it's a few months, maybe it's whatever, but, but that there's some, something that everybody looks at as the yardstick. So, that would be good.
Yes.
The only thing I wanted to say was that, that I think Eric and I share similar thoughts about this, but when, just knowing a little bit about this background, I, I want to make sure for the record that, that everyone understands, we're not solving any real estate issue, or any type of, you know, like, the town is not belong in that conversation. Where the town has skin in the game, so to speak, is issues of right-of-way and issues of subdivision management that have to remain uniform throughout the enforcement of every subdivision in Reedfield that falls under our sort of auspice. So, so whereas I, I don't ever want the town to inject themselves into a land-owning dispute, that, that's not appropriate. But, but for this, what I think we're doing is, like you said, it's, 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 it's like thirty years of, of just, you know, gumming up the works. And so, if we can work deliberately and cooperatively to, to sort of unwind that and get, I, I think about, for some reason, I think about the plastic bags getting stuck in the efficiency main, you know? It's thirty years of that, just that buildup. And if, and, and that's what I hope everybody can buy in. So, so that's important for me to say, because I, I, I know that, I, I just, when I, I bristle if I think, oh, we're stepping into, to solve it. It actually is a very complicated situation in terms of right-of-way and how that works and how the road, and, and like you said, some culpability on the towns.
Absolutely.
Cool. Thank you. I just wanted to say that.
I'd just like to weigh in that I would like everyone involved to remain as courteous and professional as they can with each other. And I know we can only ask that of the residents, but I would ask in a much stronger manner for anyone who's associated with the town government to do so, whether it be on a committee or as an employee. Because, as we've all noted, these are very sensitive issues to people, and it doesn't help anyone for these things to become personal.
Yeah.
It's a professional problem, it's a real estate problem, it's based there, and we need to keep it that way, as a professional discussion, and find a solution that is equitable. It may not be fair, but it, a solution that's equitable to people. As you said, there have been some permits issued that maybe shouldn't have been. Now, does that mean we need to take people's houses down?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not. But does that mean that everyone now can build similarly to what that property was allowed to do? Well, that's. Well, that's probably not really correct either, so we have to find some place where this is going to make sense, and I think that's what we're looking at, and I just, I would like to have Eric insist that everything happen in a courteous and professional manner, and if people can't be that way with each other, then I think those conversations need to cease at that moment, and have people come back together when they can be that way.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, the biggest piece here is to see if people are open to doing that.
Yes.
Before we get too far into it, but I have nothing but high praise for the main association of mediation and their practitioners, so, and they probably have eighty or ninety, and it sounds like this list has, all I do know, some of them actually, has yielded some good possibilities for us. So, with that said, would somebody care to make a motion?
I would make a motion to grant the town manager's request to utilize three, up to three thousand dollars from the contingency fund to hire a mediator to address the conflict issues at the Cove Road subdivision.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it is their discussion on the motion. So, my observation on the motion will be that, you know, it's mediation, if you will, is kind of a step of resolution or leading to resolution, and so, when we get into this process, we need to understand that the gathering of information that happens beforehand is one step, and then getting people together, and the resolution is kind of a secondary step. And so, there'll be some guidance, if you will, from a well, an experienced mediator in regards to it, so, it'll probably be multi-step, but we can get moving on it. That said, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming by tonight.
Sitting there all this time.
Hopefully, we were entertaining to some degree.
You're arguing truth.
It was interesting about the library.
Yes, thank you.
A number of years ago, that we talked about, they were going to have the grammar school, and it was a big controversy, and you still end up, you know, keeping it there. But it has changed the environment I've gone in there, and it's warm in the summertime, but it used to be cooler, it's just not what it used to be.
It needs some love.
Needs some love.
So, our next item on the agenda is nineteen zero fifty, which is to develop select board goals for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, believe it or not, we're going to go into the next decade. And we're to consider options for town meeting warrant articles and ordinances. So, with all of that, this is kind of just an open discussion to just sort of initiate thoughts about, which will help guide some of our agenda setting, if you will, in the next fairly short period of time. So, this is an open discussion.
Well, are these budget goals that we want, or we're interested in, like, in terms of just seeing stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good place to just give some guidance to Eric as to when he, you know, actually works, particularly with, not so much maybe the boards and committees, but with the departments in town, things that we think might need to be addressed or not addressed. I mean, I certainly will say upfront that I want to be very prudent and try to keep within the town's, fairly close to the town's current mill rate. When I say the town's current mill rate, I don't mean the school's mill rate or the county's mill rate, I mean the mill rate that we oversee, and if that goes up, it needs to go up, I think, a reasonable amount and not an unreasonable amount, so I always have my eye on that ball.
Well, I can tell you one that I know.
Yeah.
I want the beach to be free for Reed Field residents.
You discussed that.
I really want the beach to be free for residents. I love what they do, I think, like Rob did a great job, and I say it not to be a jerk to, anyway, I just, that's what I like. And I'd be interested to see, like, how that revenue, if there was some way we could offset that revenue, somehow we could find whatever amount that the Reed Field residents pay, somehow have that be a part of the, of living in Reed Field, is you get to use the beach.
Like you get to use the library.
Yes, and like you get to use the transfer station.
Maybe they can have, like, a concession stand or something.
Something, I wonder, I wonder what type, what amount of money we'd be talking about.
Well, they had a hundred and eighty.
Well, we can't be the brainstormers of the solution.
No, no, no.
But we can certainly look at what the financial position is.
Yeah, fiduciarily, I think we have that ability to sort of examine it and say, you know, if you're like, you know, Dennis, you're crazy, it's so much revenue, then that would be interesting, but I, you know, here's my thing, I generally look at things like this as, you know, we do ask, there is a relationship between what the finances of the town request of the people of the town, right? We ask you to pay this for this particular thing, and in, I just have always been a wired to say, well, for that, what we could do is maybe work it this way, give something in return, a negotiation, an understanding that, you know, we know that, you know, geez, it's the, the mill rate is this, but gosh, you know, you get a lot of stuff in return for that, and the beach is a great way of saying, hey, listen, you know, this is part of living in this great place, is you get the access to this beautiful beach, and it might seem like a trivial, small thing, but for some reason, it just means something to me.
Well, it's like the trails, the trails.
I agree.
Are important to Reed Field, and that's.
The outdoors, I just always think about this, Reed Field outdoors, you know, you know how Winthropes, that we play outside, that's, I just always think about Reed Field, and I think of being outdoors, the trails, the beautiful, like the beach, and, I don't know, it just, I just always think of outdoors, and that's just part of our brand.
Well, maybe one thing that could be looked at is what do surrounding communities do who have beaches, and that can be part of that financial discussion, how do they fund it, and so on, just so that you have some comparison, that's what we do with lots of things that we're looking at, is.
But it's important that this is being said, because it really just denotes that it's an area that we need to start looking at and discussing and so forth, and I do have personally to add on to that, sort of a broader idea about how we might approach recreation in town. We did create a Parks and Recreation coordinating group, and so, this may be a place where a little bit more discussion could happen about programming and how all that occurs, and.
As part of that.
As part of that.
Also, Heritage Days should be.
Absolutely.
So, maybe look at just the broader discussion.
Obviously, that's a budgetary thing, because, and if that happens, just to point it out, that doesn't mean there's any more, more or less money, it means the bi-annual ten thousand will then become an annual five thousand.
Right, well, and, I mean, additionally, I think, yeah, the thing we do want to make sure that we do within the budgetary process is to go back to the original select board goals, which just happened to be in the packet tonight, because they were in reference to the local food farm ordinance. So, looking at that, there may be some budgetary guidance or concerns there, and Heritage Days was one of those items, that's there.
Okay, that's good, so, if I can draw that up and go to another one, I think I made it really clear that I'd like to have the library building come up as an item. I'd really like to see us move forward with a plan, and I liked the idea of it being a more comprehensive plan, it doesn't have to be everything this year, but let's make a one-to-five-year plan, and if we have to fund it all now, that's fine, or fund it over time, but I think it needs to happen, and along those lines, I'd like to request that we do, I think I talked to you singularly, Eric, about this, but have Norton Home Inspections come back and do a review of the fire station, because that's been on our list for a long time, and they had asked for an addition and a rebuild a number of years ago, and it was turned down at town meeting twice, I think. That doesn't mean that their needs have gone away, and I'd like to have an evaluation of the building, so we can look at it from that standpoint, and then do the same thing we're doing with the library, and we've had that on our goals for a number of years, and.
Well, you guys are looking at all the buildings this year, you and John, right?
Right. So, I think if we got that evaluation, it would let us move forward, and that was a very small amount of money comparatively.
Absolutely was, yeah, for the amount of information we get, yeah.
Right.
So, I'll make that, I'll move that up into the do-it-now category.
I think that if we have to go forward, well, we have to go forward with some proposal on the library, it will be in people's thoughts of, well, what is the fire station? If you're asking us for X number of dollars for the library, are you coming back next year and asking for so much for the fire department? I think we need to have some answers to give people.
Yep.
Like you say, if we're looking at multiple years, we have to have a plan.
Right, and we just need to push and do it, so, I'm not saying I want to build on to the fire station this year, but I think we need to have the information more and get some more information from Lee, now that they've lived for a number of years without having what they had wanted, they may have changed their mind or not, but.
And don't they have a heating problem?
No, we resolved that, that was just old equipment, but that's been fixed, although it could be improved with, you know, at least in some of the areas, I think, with a little bit, you know, maybe a heat pump for that one half where they have the kitchen, the main bay, that's an awfully big space to heat, so that's.
Vacuous, open space. The only other thing I would say is number four on the goals in terms of the cannabis considerations, we're talking about expenditures, and of course, revenue is always something that's going to come up, there is an opt, right, currently, I believe there's an opt-in where you have to say you will allow that, and that might then, because I know Bruce, you're level head often, but that might, if there is a question or something like that, in terms of something on the, the public, you know, in terms of the public, what am I trying to say, the warrant, or the, you know what I mean, the town meeting, just because I think that's going to, here in the next two years, twenty, they're saying twenty, you know, nineteen, twenty twenty in the spring, so, it's just something to think about in terms of revenue.
Yeah, well, Eric and I did attend a session done by Prudy Flaherty, and actually have quite a bit of information that came back from that, and I was going to hand it to you, because I think you're on the list for taking a look at that. I think this is the year we need to get a, we've sort of been stepping back and saying, well, what is the state going to do?
What are they going to do? Well, they've done.
They've done, I think, what they're going to do now, so, we do need to see where we need to be with an ordinance on this.
Had you suggested a public hearing, or was that for a later date?
I, yeah, I would, well, we would do a public hearing for any ordinance that we brought forward, but my thought was a public listening state, a public listening opportunity before we actually make the ordinance.
That's what I was thinking about, yeah.
But it should be, Dennis has talked about this before, it should be a fairly well-guided discussion, however.
Right, it's not a pro or con usage.
Right, we're past that, it's about the town and whether or not, you know, the, there are incentives in terms of, you know, cultivation, you know, that part, there are, in terms of manufacture, sale, things like that, that, you know, people talk about buildings in Reed Field that are, you know, underused, it would certainly seem like something that would help that.
Well, we also have to consider the counterpart to that, which is some of the things that have been happening in Farmingdale, Augusta, Manchester. Manchester did not take any action, and then all of a sudden, in a two-mile strip, they have four dispensaries.
Right, that's why us making an action would help that, yes, ma'am.
Augusta has found that in neighborhoods, they're having huge traffic problems from these home dispensaries that were not really meant to be used the way they're being used, and they have huge traffic issues, and then they have to have a moratorium, and I think that creates more angst than just dealing with it up front.
Yep.
And coming up with a plan that you institute before it becomes a problem, and then you have to pull back and.
Absolutely, there's a sensible plan for Reed Field, and I'm excited to try to find it.
Right.
Absolutely.
I'll get that material to you from Prudy Flaherty.
I would love that.
So, would you think that an ordinance would be possible for June, or is the?
I think so.
You think so?
I think, I think, I think this is one we want to bring forward, and I think probably, if we're also going to do a local foods, that would probably be a June ordinance as well.
Yep.
I'm pretty sure we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel.
No, I don't think so.
This particular ordinance, so that's, it makes it a little bit easier, I think.
Right, well, and we also have the traffic, parking, roads.
Yes.
That's been in the works, and that needs to be finished up for this year.
Yeah, well, that, again, that can and really should happen outside of a June meeting, because that is a select board ordinance, so, that's something that I've just been dragging my feet on, so, I'll apologize for that, and say that you should have something, I'll say, January, February.
Yeah, to explain to the public, a traffic, a local traffic ordinance is actually not an ordinance that you do in your town warrant, the select board sets that ordinance, that's by state law. However, that all said, we want to engage the community in that process, so when we have that ordinance written, we will take information back on it, so, sort of be, it'll be like a policy in the sense that we'll do a first and second reading.
Two minutes until eight.
To what?
I think that gives us a full agenda of warrant considerations.
I think it does, too.
And I just echo what Bruce said about budget, how about you, Dennis, Chris?
Yeah.
Keep it as close as we can to what we're doing, knowing that some things may push it a little bit, but trying not to push it far.
We have a very fiscally responsible town manager that will guide us, and I feel like this board is in agreement.
And we have a budget committee that keep us all in line.
There may be some opportunities for savings throughout the budget, too.
Absolutely.
That's always one, high-level scans, got to be done.
Right.
The only other thing I would mention on this particular thing, particular item, is on the warrant itself, unless people here at this table or the budget committee have other concerns, I'd like to keep the warrant structure very similar, the same number of items, I know it takes a long time to go through and vote on them, but it really gives you the year-to-year, and we have made some adjustments where some, part of some department moved over or whatever, but I think pretty much we've, we're, I think we're at the place, we're done with all that now.
I don't foresee any changes.
So, things make sense now.
And the people are used to it, they're used to it.
And then you can, as you said, get some year-to-year comparisons going.
Consistency as teachers.
So, it's always that same question, you know, warrant article fifteen is generally always the same one, so, good. That said, I'll, anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?